Everyone, I'd like to call the special school board of the Carson City School Board trustees to order. Today's date is February 2nd, 2022. Time is 5:30 PM. The first item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda as submitted.
So moved. Second?
First and a second. Any discussion from the board before we move on? Any public discussion on the agenda? Seeing none? Any online?
No, Mr. Varner?
I'll now call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Before we get started, I'd like to let the public know that tonight's board meeting is being interpreted to Spanish, and the public can go to the district's webpage, www.carsoncityschools.com, find the words "district mission," and click on the red text just below and follow the We will now move into the flag salute. If Don Creeny?
...of the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Creeny. And before we start, I've also been given, and all the trustees have, a superintendent candidate community feedback statistics sheet provided by Mrs. Strasberg. So if anybody wants a copy, I'm sure she has some more copies that you can get from Thank you. Moving into the agenda, item number three, discussion and possible action in selecting the CCSD Board of Trustees' top one or two candidates to be interviewed on February 22nd and February 23rd, 2022, if needed, to fill the superintendent vacancy in the Carson City School District. And before we move on, I'd like to read a statement of mine. I want to thank all the superintendent candidates who applied and especially those who participated in the initial round of interviews. I also want to thank the community members who have watched the interviews and completed the survey. Your comments have been very helpful. We realize that the decision made during the superintendent search process will have an impact on the school district and the community for a long period of time. This has weighed heavily on us, and we are committed to making the best decision as we move forward. We are fortunate that we had a highly qualified group of professional educators who applied. However, tonight we must select one or two individuals to move forward in the process. I would like to thank the community for entrusting us as your representatives to make this very important decision. The superintendent's search process was new to all trustees. However, I believe the process has been and will continue to be conducted in a transparent manner which allows the community to be part of the process. I've also been advised by Dr. Oliver that all the reference checks have been made on the candidates, and there is no problems noted to date. Now would be the time that we'll move on, and each trustee will now be asked to list their top candidates in no particular order and explore and explain why they are their top choices. What I thought I would do is just let the trustees decide if somebody wanted to go first, and then we'll move on from there. Anybody want? Okay, Don, you want to go first? Thank you.
I'll start it off. I concur with you. I think all of our candidates were excellent and have some terrific qualities. I actually have one candidate. I felt this candidate was a little better than the rest. There is no doubt in my mind that Andrew Feeling should be the next superintendent of the Carson City School District. His understanding of how to problem-solve difficult situations, high moral character, and humble temperament make Andrew our best choice to manage the district. He has become one of the best school district financial officers in the state. He'll become one of the best superintendents in our state as well. And that's what I have.
Thank you, Don. Mr. Walker?
You know, I'll concur with AJ. I think, you know, one of the things, kudos to our candidates because we had solid candidates. And really, as I've been kind of weighing this in my brain over the last week, there's been a lot of people within the community who have contacted me and kind of shared their thoughts. And really thinking of this, I think one of the strengths AJ has is a real, solid knowledge of the fiscal side of things. He also has a standing in the state educational community. So I think that's a benefit, but there's also some areas that I think could be stronger. And I think Tasha Fuson actually had a great interview talking to former employees of hers, almost unanimous, you know, high marks. So I think those two candidates stand out as my top two, but it wasn't an easy decision. One of the things that I really like about those candidates is they are truly invested in our community. You know, they are, they're here, they're going to be here, and we know them. These are really uncertain times, and I think that is huge for me.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Laurel Crossman, please.
I would like to also concur with everyone's comments. I think that we had outstanding candidates. It reminded me going through the interviews how many people are so dedicated to education and have dedicated their lives to improving opportunities for kids. When I'm making this decision, I'm thinking of, I think all of them are qualified, and some have better attributes. And so when I make my decision, I think about what does Carson City need at this time? And I think when we look at the fact that in 2023, our SRF funding is going to run out, to me, Andrew Feeling rises to the top because of his experience with budgeting, with advocating for legislation, and how we can help change what is the current law on the whole harmless thing. That is a huge strength for me. So he is, the other quality that has stood out is a strength of his, I think, is his work with the strategic plan, the one five years ago, and currently on the refresh this time. He's been involved since he has come to our district in that. So he is one of my top two, and my other is Tasha Fuson because of her experience in our district, the support from our staff. I think there was a lot of good strengths as to teacher development and tracking student achievement, and so those are my top two.
Thank you. Joe?
Yeah, thank you, and thanks, everybody. This is important, and I'm glad that most of the chairs are filled up because we need to be paying attention to this. I too thought we had a good candidate pool, a strong candidate pool. I was looking at several different metrics when I was trying to make this decision. You know, before we got the public survey, if you will, the information that I reviewed that everybody submitted, the interviews that we conducted, and I was looking for somebody that not only had the understanding and technical skills, if you will, to understand how a school district runs. Sorry, can you hear me better now? I forget sometimes. But also has the right temperament, has a well-roundedness as far as the school district goes, and really has a whole district approach. I think everybody brought something valuable to the table. You know, some folks focused in certain areas versus other areas, but they, you know, but they all had something, I think, solid to offer, and I can hear the drum roll in my head going, so I'll stop beating around the bush. But my top candidate was Dr. Goldheart. I think that he brought all the same things, most all the same things. Not everybody hit all those metrics, obviously, but to me, he brought a well-roundedness, a fresh approach. And anyway, I thought he was my top choice that I would move forward.
Thank you. Lupe?
Well, I also want to thank the community because we got a lot of responses from teachers, from community members, and that was extremely helpful, and all of those were taken under consideration. My decision was based on the following concerns that we received from our community. Teachers are burned out. Parents are unsupportive. Students are struggling. So our community is asking for a strong superintendent to lead us with focus and experience for the future. And before I identify the two candidates that I voted for, I also want to say thank you to our internal candidates because I do feel that they have very strong values and very strong skills. However, we do have to hear the community and based on the community, but the community's needs, I feel that we certainly could benefit from bringing someone from outside the Carson City District. So my first candidate is Dr. John Goldheart. His main focus is student achievement. He mentioned on his interview that his only agenda is student success. He has a genuine plan for parent engagement. His approach is, "We need your voice." That's how he would approach the parents. He truly wants to involve the parents from all subpopulations with policies and procedures. He sees them as true partners because they know their children best. I appreciated that he was attractive to the long relationship between the superintendent and the board. He recognizes we have a collaborative culture. We believe, we receive, excuse me, we received positive feedback from the community. They recognize he brings extensive knowledge and experience from the schools from New Hampshire, which is a highly ranked state in education. He is currently serving as a superintendent, and he attained his credentials in education and leadership from the University of Las Vegas, so he is familiar with our system. The second candidate that I voted for is Dr. Vanadice Gutierrez. She's coming to us with very impressive credentials. She has a business administration credential, special education, bilingual education, and curriculum, and instruction, and educational leadership. I liked her prior to entry plan. She wants to familiarize herself with our strategic plan. She also wants to know what's going well and what's not going well, and what to do, what do we want from her as a leader. She believes in the mission of the district and would use it as pillars of her position as a superintendent. She recognizes our district has some deficits in student achievement and is seeking for an opportunity to enhance our ratings in math and English language arts. She believes in supporting all students to reach their highest potential and share with us some examples. She also believes in holding the students accountable. She believes in empowering our teachers. She wants to make sure that we're investing in human capital and making sure that the teachers feel the excitement of student achievement. Parent and community engagement is pretty strong also in her view. Her approach is to figure out who is benefiting from our system in place and identify and remove any barriers to include all families. She also identify, she definitely wants to identify where we are failing to engage our community. She recognizes that the community is the center of the work, not the district. So those were strong points that I value from these candidates, and that's my vote.
Thank you, Lupe. In no particular order, based on the interview scores, written work submitted, prior experience, et cetera, the two candidates that I'm going to talk about rose to the top for me. First one is Dr. John Goldheart. I looked at his record. He's been an educator for 33 years. He is the only current superintendent. He has a doctorate in educational leadership, a master's in public administration and school He is currently superintendent of a district which has 22 schools with a student population of over 13,000-plus students. The 22 schools, there's four high schools, 14 elementary schools, and four middle schools. I liked a lot what he had to say in his interviews, in his interview. I believe he has a personality that will be well-accepted by the district staff and I also liked that he stated that he would come in to the district and listen, 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 and not come in with an attitude of, "I know everything." I believe that he could establish a good working relationship with the board, the staff, and the community. And as I also looked at it, and no offense to anyone, but we've been under the same leadership for 14 years, and I believe that maybe bringing somebody in from the outside with a fresh perspective may be beneficial. And that's kind of why he rose to the top for me. The second candidate that rose to the top for me is Mr. Feeling. I looked at his performance here at our school district for the last eight years. He's been our budget director. During that time, he's worked closely with most other school districts in the state. He's worked in the legislature. I believe he's testified there. I liked a lot what he said in his interview. I know his interview was the first one in the morning, and that's always tough, but he has a lot of experience, I think, could be beneficial for the district. He's very intelligent. I believe he's a quick learner, and what he lacks in maybe experience at a superintendent level, that he could pick that up very quickly. Thank you. He also has the most budget experience of any candidate, and when I looked at our budget situation for the next several years, we're going to be in a deficit spending category, and I believe that he has the knowledge with budgeting and his business experience to help lead the district through that period of time. I also believe that his personality would, he would be able to improve the morale of the staff, and I believe he has the skill set necessary to improve the overall student achievement of our district. So that's, in a nutshell, why I chose Mr. Feeling as one of my top two candidates. Okay, to recap, we have three who want Dr. Goldheart, that's Joe Cacioppo, Lupe Ramirez, and myself. Two for Tasha Fuson, Mr. Mike Walker, and Mrs. Laurel Crossman. AJ Feeling has four, Don Creeny, Laurel Crossman, Mike Walker, and myself. And then Dr. Gutierrez has one with Lupe. So at this time, I don't know if we are ready to make a motion?
So are we just moving to accept the two? Is that what you're proposing, the two with the most votes, Mr. President?
Yes, that would be the issue here. Or if there's other discussion that the board wants to bring forward now?
Well, I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the following applicants for the superintendent of the Carson City School District to be interviewed on February 22nd and, if necessary, February 23rd, 2022, between the hours of 8:00 AM and 10:00 PM on those days. The location which will be designated, candidates named AJ Feeling and John Goldheart.
Second by Joe, a motion by Mr. Walker, second by Joe. Any further discussion from the board this time? Seeing none, we'll open it up for public comment. Let me read the thing here for you. Public comment will be accepted in person or through virtual participation via email. Comments may be made by members of the public on any matter within the authority of the board. Please note that public comment will be taken on items marked for possible action before action is taken on such items, and members of the public are encouraged to comment on such items at the time they are being considered. And we would ask you to come to the podium, state your name for the record. However, we will open a public comment after the comment on this particular item here. So at this time, I just call for public comment on this particular item that we're voting on, or that had the motion on. So anybody who wants to come forward, and if you come forward, state your name for the record, please?
Can I speak right now?
Yes.
And Mr. President?
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt. I just want to make sure everyone was clear that this is public comment on agenda item three specifically.
Right.
There will be general period of public comment on anything else within the board's jurisdiction.
Yes, that is correct.
I am the former hired director of the first year of management of the school.
Do you, will you turn on your microphone, sir? It's, we're not going to be able to capture that for the record.
Ah, yes.
You want to reset its time?
It's green. Is that the correct color? I'm sorry. For the record, my name is Jay Aldine. I am the former director, executive director of the Truckee River Flood Management Authority in Washoe County for 10 years, and I filled out my comment card for number, item number three. I debated whether I would come down or not, if I could provide any influence at all. I did listen to all the, in fact, I will just say easily, mine for Dr. Goldheart is the long one. The reason why I am stating the fact that I'm a retired executive director is for the express purpose that my board consisted of, the mayor of Sparks, the mayor of Reno, the Washoe County Chair of the Washoe County Commission, and then three more, Sparks, Reno, Washoe County Commissioners on my board. It was a consensus board, meaning all votes had to be unanimous, period. It was always 6-0, 5-0, depending on who was absent. I will, I would like to offer one just brief bit of advice for a question that I read in the comments, and that was, "Why would Dr. Goldheart want to leave after three years?" I can easily tell you, Reno, Sparks, and Washoe County don't get along very well generally. It is extremely difficult to build consensus in that community. And with a board of, what does he have, 15 people? That would be one of the most exasperating, challenging projects I could ever imagine. I was worn out day in and day out for 10 years. I can't imagine how he can even smile after the difficulties he must encounter. And that's not because people are difficult, it's because everybody is different, and everybody requires a separate set of responses in order to be able to understand the situation. And I will also state that for an education, for a school district, I would like to see an educator for a, is that three minutes?
Yes, three minutes. Just to remind the public, during this portion, you also are limited to three minutes.
I know the rules. I am very much a student of Nevada law.
Well, thank you for your comments. I appreciate it. I have some sign-up forms here, and is Nick Meyer, I think it is, in the audience? Thank you.
My name is Nicholas Meyer. I'm a planning commissioner in Douglas County. I'm also a former high-tech business executive, and I've hired over 100 people for executive positions. And I've found that in my experience, that when you're hiring for an executive position, I've always had my best success in hiring someone that has done the job before. The reason for this is because they have their learning curve behind them. They're not learning on the job. They're able to contribute right away because they know the important things to concentrate on, and their experience is invaluable, and that's really what you're paying for. It would be a mistake to hire a candidate that does not have the experience of actually being a superintendent, and it would be a catastrophic mistake if the board hires someone who clearly has a political agenda, as some of the candidates clearly do. Nevada K-12 schools rank 49th out of 50 in the nation. I believe it's a mistake to hire someone I believe it's a mistake to hire someone from within a system that has demonstrated such failure. New Hampshire has the six best public schools in the United States. They rank seventh for quality and sixth for safety. New Hampshire schools have the fourth highest reading test scores among states and the second highest median ACT scores of 25.1. I think it's an advantage to us that we have an opportunity to hire a candidate from New Hampshire who has the experience of actually being a superintendent in a school district that has high reading and math scores. I think the choice is pretty clear that Dr. Goldheart is our best choice. Thank you.
Thank you very much. John, I think it's Vetter. I'm sorry, just state your name for the record so we get it properly.
Are you on? When it's, when it's green, huh?
Yes, when it's green, thank you.
Green for go, red for stop. Okay, my name is, my name is John Vitell, and I live at 678 Derby Court in Carson City. In my working years, I've interviewed and hired a huge number of folks, both while in the military, had a long military career, and then during my final 30 years of civilian life. And yes, I'm not a young man, I'm 85. Thank you. I've owned and operated three civilian businesses too, which I started from scratch. I'm a degree electrical engineer, and I have a master's degree in management. And I've, I've taught at Golden Gate University. And when I was teaching, probably the most important factor that I taught was if you want to know what the problems are in your organization, you need to get out on the floor and talk to the people that are doing the work. So in my experience, a person who's already been a superintendent has more than likely, and is running a good school, more than likely learned that very important fact and will actually get out and talk to the teachers. Those are the people that know where the problems are. Okay, I'm concerned that we haven't, I don't think we've been going in a very effective direction because our kids are not learning, the kids I talk to, they, they don't read well. They don't do math well, et cetera. And I've talked, my, I have a son who graduated from school here in Carson City, or in Carson City area, not with the Carson High School. In my opinion, there's only one applicant that meets the qualifications and then cut right to the chase. That's Dr. Goldfarb. He has been a superintendent. He knows what the problems are being a superintendent. And he, obviously, his interview told me that he knows how to get down and talk to people. So I think Dr. Goldfarb, who presides over an excellent school and an excellent school system, will be our best choice. Not to say anything against any of the other candidates. We've got some fine candidates that possibly will be great superintendents in the future. But today, I think we need Dr. Goldfarb. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Tim Smith? Okay. Richard Nagel?
Good evening. My name is Richard Nagel. I, I just wanted to talk about Dr. Goldheart for a moment and, and stay that, you know, he really thinks out of the box as far as things go. He used the school bus system to deliver meals when people were shut in. And I think that was a godsend to a lot of people because he has a 46% minority in his school district. He also used that to drop off the school bus system, to drop off lesson plans, hard copies, to students. Okay, that's really thinking out of the box during the pandemic. Okay? So we need that kind of thought process that will bring our, our students up to where they should be. He comes from a district that's fourth in the nation. Okay? Compared to us with bottom last. This would be a godsend for us to get someone like that of that caliber in here. It's really important to us, okay? And we'd appreciate a vote for Dr. Goldheart. I, I just can't say enough, what I read about him, I Googled him, I went to his website, I looked at his Facebook page, and I really found nothing. And also, when it comes to collective bargaining, which seems to be an issue, he got a recommendation letter from the union, which is almost unheard of. Okay? So he is a good negotiator. And he also, you know, he had trans, what they said about him was he had transparency, and he acted in good faith. So I really can't say enough good things about this guy. And I'm really pleased that he was in the pool because he stood, to me, he stood head and shoulders above everybody else. Because we need somebody who has minority experience, okay? Someone who can deal with things that come up out of the box. He really put things together for me. And I just appreciate you guys giving him a, a second look and a good thought. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Richard. Any other public comment on this matter? Maxine? Or, I'm sorry, Maxine, I guess?
My name's Maxine Bradshaw, and I'm here to speak what everybody else is saying. I'm here to speak in support of and cast my public vote for Dr. John Goldheart as the next superintendent here. And I did look at his resume, I watched his interview, and I was so confident with his experience and qualifications. But I think what touched me the most is that not just his background in leadership, management, fiscal, curriculum, diverse demographics, it's the fact that he is really about getting out with the people. He's really about going out a meeting and talking, and I love the listen and the learn. He listens and learns, and then he leaves. And if you get that, that's, that's perfect. That is really the foundation of wisdom, is to be a good listener. And he just sounds like he would be completely engaged. He's compassionate. He, he just understands academic, social, and, and fundamental things that children need. And I, and I talk about the, I, what Richard just brought up too. Here it was that he's, he's, his problem-solving abilities. He applied it to this event when COVID broke out. He made certain that his students did not go hungry during the COVID crisis, using school buses, like Richard said, to deliver the food and the lesson plans and carry on. It's really, it is thinking outside the box. And I think that his own childhood of poverty and his background gave him a true dimension of understanding, and it's almost compassionate. You know, it's just a compassion. He has a compassion for children. So I think that he would, if anyone, I think, out of all of the candidates that could lift us up and make us a real competitive state in education, it would be Dr. Goldheart. He, he is my, he has my vote, and I think he would be a wonderful person for the job. Thank you.
Thank you. Pepsi?
Pepsi Strasburg. I'm here to support Dr. Goldheart because he has hands-on experience as a superintendent. He was in Salt Lake City where the minority, or should I say majority, of the population was 57%. And in Manchester School District, it was 48%. So the makeup of the school community in Carson City was very similar to Salt Lake City and Manchester. He believes that education is an equalizer. I do too. Lot of people, I, I've known, my late husband was extremely poor. And then he was a professor emeritus at Cal State Hayward. So it is possible. And somebody who has gone through that adversity understands what needs to be changed. He completely looked at the strategic plan. The strategic plan was voted as the most ambitious, but you have to aim high if you want to go anywhere. He did the reopening plan, which is on the Manchester School District website. It has four stages, very data-driven. There is no ambiguity, no subjective measures. It is all objective. You know upfront what's going to happen and when it's going to happen. He had an excellent personality that came through in his interview. And he's going to be able to bring new practices. We need a change. I like Mr. Fueling. I think he's an intellectual, and maybe under the tutelage of Dr. Goldheart, he can be the next superintendent after him. Dr. Goldheart said that this was the crescendo of his career, which I think is an enormous plus for this school district, to have some succession planning. I know that Mr. Stokes had been here for a while, but we don't have a clear successor. He recommended two people. So I would like to recommend that this board vote for Dr. Goldheart and bring him in and change the practices in this district for the better, increase our proficiencies in math, science, and English art, literature arts, and then in that process, develop a successor for the next round. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pepsi. Any other public comment?
Hello, my name is Christine Sylvester, and I'm a mom. I, I've lived in Carson City my whole life. I went through the Carson City Schools myself. I have a second grader, and I have a daughter who will be entering kindergarten next year and another one that will hopefully make it to the school district at some point. I, I don't have the same, I haven't done the same amount of research as some of the other individuals who have commented this evening, but I did watch the interviews. And I, I agree with Dr. Goldheart being our next superintendent. He demonstrated, he, that he has dealt with difficult situations before in his interview. He demonstrated that he can work across aisles and ideas. We have, we have some great, great educators in our school district. We, and a lot of them are, are deflated. They can't be good teachers because they don't feel like their efforts do any good. And I feel that we need someone to, to come in and reinvigorate the, the excellent individuals that we have here already present in Carson City. And Dr. Goldheart has an energy and a background that can do that for, for my children and all of the children across the, the city. And I just wanted to add that, that we, we have great resources here. But sometimes you need to get some outside perspective, if only for a short period of time, to really boost what you already have and invigorate what you've already invested in. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further public comment? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Leigh Anne Saram, and I've been, I'm a native Carson City, and my kids, all three, went through Carson City Schools. And I actually, even though we are supposedly ranked 49th or 50th in the nation, I truly don't believe that our district in, in particular struggles as much as the rest of our state. I, I think they, they've gotten great education. That's just my, my, my little pitch to teachers and, and all of you and Mr. Stokes as well. I think that there's some great things going on. To continue that, I'm pleased with the finalists that you guys have chosen. I believe Dr. Goldheart was outstanding in a lot of his interview responses. One, one thing he said is he, he wants to honor the work done so far. And I think that's important that we, with the morale of the teachers. I mean, they just constantly are told that we're 50th in the nation, we're 50th, you're not doing it, you're not doing it. And I think that he will come in, not that we don't have improvement to make. I'm not saying that every, there's always improvement to make. But I do think that when you come in to hammer on who's already here and has been working so hard, that the morale will be down and there won't be the collaboration that you can get. And I think he, he brings that to the table. And I also liked how humble he was, and he said that he would meet one-on-one with anyone and wanted to meet one-on-one with all of the community that wanted to meet with him. And I think that's important to have an open door policy with our community. We're too, we're very tight-knit here in our community and in Carson, and always have been. Since I was, you know, raised here, I know. And I think it's important that he's going to be open door and want to invite us in. And I think that's really important. And then A.J., obviously, I've worked with A.J. with many, many different school committees. And I, I do agree that budget-wise, we're going to be going into some difficult situations and that he has some experience to be able to do that as well. So I just wanted to say thank you guys for all your time and effort and for making this as transparent as you, you have with the community. And I'm pleased to, to see that we're, we're going in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further public comment? Karen?
Good evening. Karen Stevens, for the record. I've lived here for 26 years. Retired from the Nevada Department of Education. Have a master's degree in organizational management. I've been reading and watching all the videos and researching on the candidates. And I too recommend Dr. Goldheart. He's the only individual that's a superintendent currently and is a very successful one. And since I forgot my glasses tonight, I won't be able to read my paperwork. So I'm just going to leave it at, you go, John. We want you.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you. And thank you for making this process so transparent. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you. Any further in-person public comment? Seeing none? I'd just like to say, oh, yes, you can. We'll put it in the record. Before I close, I'm sorry, before we close public comment, I'd like to just thank everybody for their well-thought-out presentations tonight. We greatly appreciate it. Before we move on, do we have any online public comment?
Yes, Mr. Varner, thank you. This public comment is from Charlotte Stewart. She's the mother of two children who live in Carson City School District. She would like to have the opportunity to have a successful, non-discriminatory school district that promotes family values to send her daughters to. We started homeschooling this last year because of the decline in our school system. After reviewing the candidates, I think that Dr. John Goldheart's experience as superintendent in New Hampshire would be an excellent improvement to our children's educational needs. The fact that New Hampshire is fifth ranking in K-12 backs my opinion that he is a good fit. I really don't think that we should have Dr. Vernice Gutierrez or Dr. Miranda Cogan because we already have a problem with division and equity being forced down our throats. Also, they seem to have participated in destruction of the Denver and Salt Lake City school districts. We don't need that to happen here. I really would like an opportunity to send my children to public school in a successful district, and I think Dr. John Goldheart could change things for the better to make that possible. This next comment is from Robert Harris. Mr. Harris expresses his concerns with hiring Tasha Fuson as superintendent because she is in charge of the Family Life Committee, and she has an advantage of having inside knowledge and influence from the superintendent's office and the open endorsement from the superintendent to keep the good old boy network together. Tasha Fuson has touted the district graduation rate increase on her resume. However, when you lower standards and offer a certificate of merit, the equitable change is not lost on the lack of preparedness these graduates are missing. Just reference approaching standards earned by Just reference approaching standards earned by the district in high school. Please reference the Nevada Department of Education Student Assessment. Dr. Cogan has been unable to stay in a role for more than two years. This red flag, along with the lack of work experience outside of her area of expertise, is a non-starter for me. This process is expensive for taxpayers and the children need consistency in a superintendent. Her interview didn't go well either. AJ and Dr. Joseph, like, excuse me, said mm, like it was a verb during their interviews, almost as much as Dr. Gutierrez mentioned her race. I don't think these three candidates are ready for a superintendent role based on the interviews I watched and the experience on their resumes. All of these candidates need to work on executive maturity before they are viable candidates. I'm concerned about someone who relies on what is on the outside and how this decides who they are on the inside. If we were all blind, would race still matter so greatly to this woman? AJ was very little delegation and management experience with his current and largest team of four subordinates. Dr. Joseph has the best chance to become a superintendent, but not until she gets some outside experience. Her mission most likely would be status quo as she has undoubtedly... The next comment.
The rest of the comment will be entered into the record, though, correct?
Thank you. The next comment is from Barb Mathers, the mother of two homeschooled children. Ms. Mathers is in support of Dr. John Goldheart, the current superintendent of Manchester School District in New Hampshire. New Hampshire is ranked fifth in K-12 schools, which is a far cry from Nevada's 50th in the nation. We want a superintendent who will get us out of the bottom place and put our students first. Dr. Goldheart said he wants to put the students first and have community involvement in the education of our students. That is exactly what we need. Our students have been placed below grants, politics, and personal agendas for far too long. We want someone who's going to help our students, not harm them, and put them first. He shared that he wants students to graduate with life skills and be able to contribute to society. We need that too. Our high school students are graduating without even being able to contribute to society by holding a job because they aren't learning any kind of work ethic as standards continue to be lowered. We need to get back to the basics, teach reading, writing, math, and history, et cetera. That is what Dr. Goldheart wants to do. Any other candidate would be a step back for our students and cause further division in our district. Please put our students first and select Dr. John Goldheart. After all the mess that has been caused with our kids over the past two years, please select someone who's going to fix our problems, not create more. Please restore faith in the school board by selecting Dr. John Goldheart. Mr. Varner, the next comment is from Sharice Witt. I request that the school board seriously consider Ms. Fuson for the open position. After watching the meeting last week, she seems to have the experience, knowledge, and enthusiasm that fits our school and our community. She will be a strong leader to go forward with the best strategies for the district. Mr. Varner, I'm going to refresh and see if we had any late public comment. Come in via email, please.
Thank you.
Mr. Varner, I have a couple of more that have come in. This comment is from Erin Bean. She's writing to comment on tonight's meeting and discussion. I watched two interviews and know you have a difficult decision tonight. I do not want to mention, I hear that Dr. Goldheart is at the end of his career. He is moving to be close to family. We went a long time, excuse me, we want a long-term person so we don't have to do this again in three years. And the next comment is from Mr. Jason Tingle. The doc has my vote. Don't let us down. And that's the last of my comments, Mr. Varner.
Thank you, Renee. Again, just appreciate everybody's input. Your input's very valuable to us. We have a motion on the table. And now I'll call for a vote. All in favor of the motion?
So, Mr. Varner, just,
Go ahead.
I just want to put on the record before our principals, Mr. Stokes, and all the teachers, I just want to recognize our teachers also use transportation to deliver meals and lesson plans. And so I just want to say that, of course, that's a great thing he did in his district. But I don't want our staff to feel like we don't recognize how hard they worked that year. And that certainly was one of the many things they did. So thank you to Mr. Stokes and our staff also.
Thank you for that. And I totally agree with you. I know that everybody worked really hard through this period of time and they're continuing to work hard. So we do have the motion on the table. And I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Here are no nays. The motion carries unanimously. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Fueling and Dr. Goldheart on moving forward in the process. And again, thank all the other candidates who applied. And we thank them for their interest in the job. Anybody, it's not really on the agenda here, but I'd like to add for our next meeting that we opened up a discussion with the Board of Trustees about the next steps going forward in this process to finalize the details. Right now, everything's kind of set for the February 22nd. Based upon, the location will be based upon space available. But we need to have that discussion on the next meeting. So that'll be our next regular board meeting, which will be on February 8th. And I believe that's at 7:00 PM still?
Or 6:15?
No, it'll be at 7:00 PM. Now, we'll move on to the public comment. Kind of got out of order there. So at this time, you can comment on other matters before the board. And just same rules, remember a three-minute time limit and come to the podium, speak into the mic, and state your name for the record. First written request I'd like to speak, I have Tim Smith. Would you please turn on the thing?
Oh, I would like to say that I have a daughter in Eagle Valley.
And state your name for the record, please.
My name's Tim Smith.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I would like to say that I think masks should be optional. I think vaccines should be optional. My daughter, who is in Eagle Valley School, she's 11 years old. She got COVID. It lasted one day. I got COVID two months ago. It lasted three days. So I don't feel, you know, I thought I had a cold, to be honest with you. I went to the hospital and they said I had COVID. My employer made me stay out for 10 days till I tested negative. I would just like to say that that, you know, I don't feel that masks should be mandated. I don't feel that vaccines should be mandated. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any other public comment at this time? Thank you.
Good evening, Leigh Anne Saram. I just have a quick comment that there was a student, a young girl, that commented at one of the past board meetings through a letter saying that one of the teachers was using proper mask-wearing as a part of their grade. And I just wanted to voice my concern. That's the first thing. It just upset me to think that this, these students at the high school could possibly have an academic grade that is influenced by mask-wearing, that could possibly influence their GPA and possible college. I mean, I just, I think that's very unfair. And I would hope that somebody would look into that and make sure that our public appearance or those actions should not reflect into our academic grade choices or, you know, GPAs. So that was what just really concerned me from the past meeting. So thank you.
And thank you. Any other public comment? And state your name for the record again, please.
My name is Nicholas Meyer. I would just like to ask the board to reflect on the entire mask situation, given that the CDC has recently come out and said that cloth masks are ineffective in preventing the transmission of COVID. So if the CDC has come out and stated that, why do we still have a mask mandate in this state? By what authority is the governor mandating masks within our schools? They had traditionally relied upon the directives of the CDC. But since the CDC no longer considers masks to be effective in preventing the transmission of COVID, why does our governor still have an emergency directive directing schools to require masks? There is absolutely no logic, no scientific basis, and no medical basis for this. So I would just ask the board to reflect on that question because there is no logic to it.
Thank you. Come on up and state your name for the record, please. And just make sure the light's on green and you should be good to go.
I'm not saying a thing. Is it green? It is? Okay. My name is Robert Barci. I've lived in Carson City since 2015, having moved from beautiful downtown Los Angeles. And I would like to compliment the board. There's no, somebody say green, but I, can you hear me? Okay. I would like to compliment the board and all of the audience. I've been to LA City Council meetings. People, this is transparency. You would recognize it if it wasn't. Good for you, good for you because you're giving them information that they need to make a tough decision. And you're on the right path. Thank you very much for making this happen. I'm done.
Thank you. You got your hand up, won't you? Come on up. State your name for the record.
Casey Rogers for the record. First, I'd just like to say that it's come to my attention that there are some teachers in your guys' school district that are having the students tape masks to their face if they're not wearing them properly. And I expect that to be investigated. You might want to start with Carson Middle School science teachers, in fact. And as well as, I just wanted to voice yet again the appalling fact that you are all still in masks that don't work. And it's been scientifically proven, time and time again, that they do not work. If you choose to wear one on your own, that doesn't work. That's up to you. But to put that out on our children, absolutely unacceptable. Child abuse, child abuse taping it to their faces is tenfold, not smart. We're looking into getting your guys' bond information on every board member here. Just wanted to make you aware of that. It's in the works as we speak. We've had enough of the colluding with the tyrannical governor who is putting out this stuff that we all know is actually against the law. Yeah, he might be able to mandate something, but it is not law. And we actually have other laws that tell us that what you guys are doing is against the law. The American Rescue Plan, I have read. I know that you guys are getting ESER funds and you're getting funding for being in compliance with this. It's out there. We know. Everybody behind me knows it's going to get pretty ugly. So I think that maybe you guys need to get together and figure this out. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, Richard? Come on up.
Richard Nagel, yeah, it's still green. I just want to say we need to revisit the math and the science as far as the masks go. As far as, I've done research and stuff and what I found is that the virus that it's mutated into is now around a half a micron in size. And the opening on your mask is three microns and some cloth masks are like four or five microns. So it's kind of like throwing sand at a chain-link fence. Okay, it's really not doing that much good. There are also the fact is that there's reports out now and there's more research going on that the virus itself has mutated away from being able to be stopped by the vaccine. And that's why we're having so many breakthrough cases of COVID and things. So we really have to take a second look at the vaccine and its uses and thought about it because it may be doing more damage than good right now. These things need to be taken into consideration. And also, I think we really tried to do a good job with the COVID. I mean, the lockdowns and everything was, it looked like logical thought to do all that in the beginning. But Sweden has fared much better than us. Like, look at the, I don't have the stats in front of me for the death tolls in Sweden, but they're a lot less per capita than we have. And they had no lockdowns. Okay? So we really need to look at best practices and think about, and move forward from there. And think about the children and think about the businesses, you know? When Gather closed, I was heartbroken because that was definitely crushed by the COVID things, you know? I was part of the group that helped people, entrepreneurs move up and get things going. And so I helped design that kitchen, okay? As a chef, I came in and volunteered my time, did the diagrams, did the legwork, found the equipment and stuff like that, and helped that person get started in their own business. So it was really disappointing to see that fold because COVID crushed it and the way our approach crushed it. So we got to stop doing damage and help people get better and move on with their lives. I think it's mutated into a virus that's less damaging than the influenza or flu. I had the flu, okay? And I had a 105 fever, 104 fever for four days, okay? I had COVID, 102-degree fever for three days. So again, it's not as bad as the flu, okay? Which we really need to kind of take seriously, but we're not wearing masks for the flu. So again, this is something we're going to have with us for the rest of our lives. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Richard. Any other in-person public comment? Come to the... You'll be next, Karen.
Hi, my name is Lisa Partee. And I wasn't planning on speaking, but everyone's bringing up the masks and the vaccines. And I just have some documents I'd like to hand you all, that you can each have one. And it has to do, it's all CDC information regarding the vaccines and the negative effects that the vaccines have. And it's all on the CDC websites. It's got all the links. And how bad these vaccines are. The children should not have these vaccines. Anyway, if I could, I'd just hand these to someone and, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Karen, I think you wanted to come up, right?
Karen Stevens for the record. I don't want to break tradition tonight and not speak about masks or COVID shots because I am against both of them very adamantly. I've been making visits at certain places like the police department, City Hall, the grocery store, the bank. the grocery store, the bank, every place that you need to go to do business. And I never wear a mask because it's harmful to your health. But I feel very sorry for the students that have to have that freaking thing plastered to their face all day long at school. It's just heartbreaking. And to hear the stories, the students talk about wearing these masks. I agree with Dr. Gold that forcing children to wear masks is child abuse. So, I hope we can rectify this sometime really soon. That would be awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Bepsi first, and we'll, I'm sorry.
I'll be really, really quick. Since there is so much comments on masks, it seems that next to the superintendent hire decision, this is a very important concern on the minds of the community. Science checks data. Data evolves. And science is our technique to evaluate that data. I know that having a chemistry undergraduate, bachelor's of science degree, I know that lab, you experiment, the data evolves, and you make a decision. It's time. It's time to put the reopening plan back on the agenda and reevaluate and reassess. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just please state your name for the record.
I am Marinka Willig, and I just wanted to share.
Is your mic on? Is it green?
It's green, yes.
Okay.
I just wanted to share that we're going into year three of all of this. And every doctor appointment I've gone to, none of the doctors have asked me, are you able to wear a mask? I can't cover my face. I've never been able to since I was a kid. So, nobody asked if I'm able to. They just said, wear a mask. And I just thought that was really rude. So, going into year three, I just want to let everybody know that I have written a letter to, and a whole, we've done a lot of studies on masks, shots, the whole nine yards. And I've got a packet that I'm mailing out to all the board members of Carson Tahoe. And I'm, in my letter, I told them, I understand you're probably very busy to study all of what's going on. So, I'm giving them all my notes, all our studies. And I'm hoping that they will stand up and stand for us, their patients, because they're in the healthcare business. They're not into the political business. And going into year three still, they're not standing up for us, the people. So, I just wanted to share that I am addressing this to the medical community, and hopefully, we can get something out of that.
Thank you. Any further in-person public comment? CNN will close in-person public comment and go to online public comment.
This comment is from Jason Tingle. He has presented the school board with more than enough evidence to show how worthless masks really are. Just today, the state released to the Department of Education the new guidelines on masks. They did not remove the cloth, they did not remove the cloth mask, which was recommended by the CDC. So, what we are really, so what are we really following? I know how, I now have confirmed and documented cases of kids getting something called carbuncle and MRSA on their face, MRSA, due to the use of face masks. We recently just had an outbreak, which I have heard has plateaued and is going in the other direction. That outbreak affected everyone, including our next-door neighbor, Douglas County. They are not masked. They had a breakout. We are wearing masks. We had a breakout. So, what is this truly actually helping? I'm asking you to use your common sense here, please. This is hurting our children more than you will ever know, and I have presented that evidence. We cannot take any more of this. The kids are fighting in schools. There are kids getting in school detention for not wearing them. How is that helping the children at all? Common sense tells us that these don't work and are no longer needed. This needs to end. Ms. Varner, I'll refresh one more time, but I believe that's all I have. Let me, one more time, please. Ms. Varner, that's all the public comment I have via email.
Hey, Richard, Mr. President.
Yes, go ahead.
Renee, I've gotten some text messages. Somebody sent in an email public comment, so. One of our teachers from Mark Twain.
Mr. Walker, I do have that. It came in after we had, it's regarding the Agenda Item 3. So, I received it after we had closed that. I'm not sure.
So, just so you know, Mr. President, that I got the text as you were moving on. So, I don't know if there was a delay in email, so I'm just putting it out there. I said I would bring it up.
Do you have any advice, Mr. Russell?
It's completely up to you, Mr. President. You can, if public comment is closed, it's closed. But you'll never get in trouble for allowing too much public comments. So, if you want to allow it to be read, that's in your discretion.
I think I would allow it to be read since it came in as we was moving on.
Thank you, Mr. Varner. This comment is from Christina Bourne. She's an educator for the school district for 18 years, and she would like to express her support for Mr. A.J. Feuling as our next superintendent. I believe that he is the most well-rounded candidate for this position. He understands the workings of a strong education system, the financial system that needs to be in place to keep a district running effectively. And he understands how to connect and communicate effectively with staff, students, and the public. In addition to all his outstanding qualifications, he also is active in our schools and goes above and beyond to help where needed, including attending school events and substitute teaching as well. I respectfully request that you highly consider Mr. Feuling for our next superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no more, is that correct?
No, Mr. Varner, that's all I have.
Okay, we'll close online public comment. And before we adjourn, adjournment is next on the agenda. I'd just like to tell the people in the audience and the people who may be watching this meeting, just express again how we appreciate you being involved in the process so far, your comments. Like I said earlier, they've been very helpful. And we look forward to continuing to work as partners as we go through this process. Mr. Cassielo?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to reiterate that, but I wanted to, if you don't mind, since we're just wrapping up public comment, because I think it's important to some of the public. We had some questions come up last meeting. We've had a lot of meetings lately, so I'm losing track of which ones they are. But I just, I think one person had said, you know, the videos of all the candidates were great, but it would have been nice if like resumes and personal statements and stuff were available. And I just wanted to make clear they were. They were in the board packets, and everybody, you know, had access to those things, at the same time we did. So, I do appreciate that comment, because I do, I agree that sometimes that stuff's helpful. But it was out there. And then somebody else mentioned the board really shouldn't have any say. We should have, or, excuse me, we should have just accepted the recommendation of NASB. And we had those kinds of questions, too. And I'll just speak for myself. I don't think we should limit ourselves. If we feel somebody who submitted an application came through, I think it's within the authority of the board to allow, you know, to give them a chance. And that's what we tried to do. And then we heard something to the effect of outsiders really shouldn't bother even applying because it's a done deal. And I hope tonight showed it isn't. You know, we had board members that made recommendations for outside candidates. In fact, we had a lot of public comment that said in favor of one of the outside candidates. So, I just want to let people know that, at least in my perspective, and certainly for me, this wasn't a done deal. We were wide open, I was wide open to all the candidates that submitted applications. And we're trying to make this as much of an above-board, transparent process as we can. And in doing that, we need public comment. So, I want to thank all, everybody for providing public comment. I just wanted to take a minute and set the record straight there. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Any other comments before we adjourn? CNN, we are adjourned. That's six.